Twenty twenty-three. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, BCAT, and video and audio recordings are being made. This hearing, this meeting of the Burlington School Committee is being held in person at the school committee room at the Burlington Public Schools Central Office. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person and virtual meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person virtual versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you have been identified, to speak. We request you please turn on your camera. Comments and statements are limited to three minutes. The Burlington Public Schools equity statement is that educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. Now we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would now entertain a motion to approve the warrant. So moved?
Second?
Any discussion on that? Okay. Let's see, we're all here, so I can do those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, and the chair votes aye. That's five zero zero. I would like to make one request. Is Ms. Kasha on? Yeah. For the future, I've noticed that because we've switched over from one system to another, there've been a few little glitches, and something that I think we used to have under doing well is we used to always include categories called special education, and we did not use the abbreviation sped. And I noticed in this week's warrant that there's a couple of categories where that's been kind of snuck, it snuck back in. Most of them do say special education, but I think that it's important that we do that, make sure that all of our categories are special education so that nobody is, I mean, I sort of, I saw it again on the warrant after not seeing it for a few years, and it gave me a little jolt in the stomach. So, thank you for trying to get it fixed, and I know you will in the future. The next item is approval of the meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2023.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the chair votes aye. That's approved. And now we have public participation. I believe there's someone here who's here for public participation. I want to invite you up and ask you to please state your name and make sure the microphone is on. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. My name is Ben Agadi. I have two students that are within Burlington Schools, very proud students, one at the high school and one at the middle school. I have two very quick questions for you tonight, and hopefully this will lead to a discussion in the future. My first question for you is, I'd like to know what the results were of the BEAM study for the Marshall Simons Middle School, and when will that study be released to the public?
Okay. I think we can just, can we share that information? Because it's already been shared.
Yeah, we can. So, Mr. Agadi, can get that to you. I believe it was made public already, but I'll make sure that you get it. And that's the BEAM report that we had completed last year.
Thank you. And what were the actions that the school committee is going to be taking forward to reinstitute the program or reconstitute the program?
Go ahead.
Again, that, through the chair, Mr. Agadi, that might be a bit of a longer conversation. I think what we discussed was the accessibility of the program as it evolved over time wasn't equitable. So what we're looking to do is we haven't identified classes of students. We were phasing out the BEAM program as we know it, and we were really trying to bring those enrichment activities to all students. And then we are also looking at other options, for instance, in particular subject areas like math, where we would offer different ways to accelerate that content area for students who are ready for that.
So for the students who were looking for a need at that, who have those needs for academic challenges, whether it is in math, or if it is in ELA, or in other areas where their needs are for academic challenge, for them to be treated equitably, this program is not going to be around for those additional challenges. Instead, the committee is shifting those resources over to being enrichment for all students, but not for the same group of students. Is that correct?
I would characterize it that way. And if it really wasn't an acceleration program, it might have been initially many years ago, but it really wasn't acting as an acceleration program in its current form. So if there's need for acceleration, I would really, we would need to have those conversations with, in your case, with your child's teachers. We can certainly try to address their needs. But the idea behind the BEAM program was we are trying to bring those enrichment activities that those small group of students enjoyed to all the students at the middle school.
But also those group of students who were able to spend a couple of hours not being in their core classes, to be able to participate, do those additional academic challenges that were there. Now, all of the students are going to be expected to be able to do that and still do their core work. That's the thought process.
Again, I'm, and Madam Chair, this might be a bit more of a discussion, and maybe we can have more of a detailed discussion. Mr. Agadi, I would welcome you to come in. Again, I think that the point is, the enrichment shouldn't be separate from the curricular program that we're offering. It should be embedded in the curriculum program that we're offering. So we don't want students to step out of their core program to get enrichment. We want them to experience that within their core program. So I think we're just changing our philosophy a little bit, but there is certainly a need to challenge all students. So again, we're not stepping away from that, from that responsibility.
So my, see, my time is up, and I just want to make sure. I would love to engage in a dialogue with you at some point if I could. I don't know that the parents who had students in that program really saw it as enrichment as opposed to additional academic challenge. We can certainly talk about that later. I appreciate your time tonight.
Sure, love to do that. I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment, sir? We'd have to go back to the tape, but Dr. Per just came here with the presentation on BEAM, so we'd have to get you the date, but you should be able to watch that on YouTube.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. Just, I think there's a large number of the community and parents that do not feel that it has been made clear that that program is now ceased and will not be coming back. That was the reason for me coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right. Now, I would like to, yeah, so, welcome back, Mr. Shannon, our student representative. We're delighted to have you with us again this year and hope you had a good summer and a good start to the year. So you have the table.
Thank you. Well, obviously, back in school, all of us students, and this year I'm a senior, which, I mean, it's supposed to be fun, but still kind of scared, especially because the college application process for like a lot of students has kicked off. And I know at Burlington High School, like, we have a flex program where every day, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we can all go to a enrichment activity. And I've been working with my English teachers and going to their college essay flex, just as an opportunity to work on myself. And flex and the BHS new schedule, like, we flipped it a little bit. It's been working a lot better. I feel as if students at BHS are enjoying it more, especially having that flex period at the end of the day. It really speeds things up. And, I don't know, BHS held its activity fair today. That was the biggest thing, I think, so far. I personally ran the Motta U.N. table and actually saw Ms. Simon when she came to visit, but I know that a lot of the freshmen, especially coming into the new school, were very appreciative. And we got a lot of signups at Motta U.N. I know girls in STEM got a lot of signups, South Asian Students Association got a lot of signups, the African American Students Association got a lot of signups. DECA always has a lot of individuals and a big club. So honestly, just the growing community is really coming back from COVID, because I know COVID times really brought a lot of club participation down. But I think that this year and years to come, we'll see a lot more of like that school-spirited vibe coming back. But honestly, this year is just getting underway, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Great. Yes, it was, I was going to mention later that I really enjoyed going and visiting the Student Activities Fair when the freshmen get a chance to see what different clubs and activities there are. And I actually went around to all the tables, and everybody was getting signups. It was really exciting. There was a lot of buzz in the air, and there weren't that many teachers there, because many of them were actually teaching. But we have these incredible student leaders in our school who were running the clubs, who were running the tables, who were talking to students. And it's really wonderful to see the range and breadth of what our students and our activities offer. And also knowing all of those clubs are also supported by our staff, our teachers who volunteer or agree to be advisors too. So that was pretty exciting.
And also give a big opportunity for a lot of the freshmen to just meet some of us, because like, I don't know, I had a lot of freshmen coming up and asking like, what is Motta U.N.? I've heard of it. And I had a conversation with them, not just about Motta U.N., but like about their interests. And it just like shows that like they don't have to be scared of the upperclassmen, because I know as a freshman, I was terrified. So it's just like a nice opportunity to get acclimated with the school environment.
That's great. Well, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shannon tonight? Thank you so much, and we look forward to our ongoing work together. Yes. Okay. And what about subcommittee reports? Were there any subcommittees that met? Mr. Brooks?
A quick note to pass along. The Recreation Commission is adding additional soccer capacity for youth soccer, and they are putting portable lights up at Mary Cummings Park to add two nine-v-nine fields and one eleven-v-eleven field. So increased capacity for youth soccer in the town.
That's great. That's really nice. Okay, any other committees met? The Burlington Youth and Family Services, which I'm on the board of, met last night, and we did, I was able to update them on some of the new SEL curriculum that we're introducing. I'm pretty sure Dr. Chen will be mentioning the Wayfair program. And we got reports from the CPAC and reports from the Police Department, who have a staff person who works with mental health issues. So there's not a lot, they are all staffed for the fall, and things are in good shape there. So that's the report for there. Any other subcommittees? Ways and Means, is Mr. Moran or someone else here from Ways and Means, and is there anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am here.
And?
Ms. Chair.
Okay.
I have no updates for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. And then other announcements. Does anyone have one? Ms. Monaco?
I happen to talk to Dr. Ed Weiner today, and he was telling me about the efforts that the Board of Health is going to help out with vaccinations.
Yes.
And it sounds like the groups are really, really helping and supporting each other. So I want to give a shout out to Dr. Weiner and the Board of Health, and to Sue Luminello for all the work they're doing to help the school department get the kids vaccinated. It's a big deal, and it really is important. So thank you to them.
Okay. Any other announcements? I also wanted to, I think that Mr. Kuna will comment later about some of the updates regarding the heating, or in this case, the cooling in our buildings. Last week was a real stretch, real difficult. It was, in the buildings that don't have air conditioning, it was quite uncomfortable. And I want to thank our staff, both the custodial staff, maintenance staff, who rushed around getting as many units as they could to the un-air-conditioned buildings, as well as to our staff who taught our students and helped our students get through that. And for the students who, you know, good pluggers, I can, we can hope there won't be any more heat waves this fall. But I did want to thank everyone for all of that. In addition, I know that the sports are affected because of the turf, which gets more hot than, it gets hotter than the grass and hotter than other places. So there, we have a policy, special regulations, about when we can use the turf fields, what we have to do, provide water and shade for students when it's over a certain temperature, having the temperature measured, having practices early in the morning or later in the evening. And I know that Mr., I spoke to Mr. Hart today, and he, you know, took care of that. And our coaches understand that we want our children to be safe when it's too hot for this turf, for the turf. So I wanted to do a thank you for that. Ms. Bond?
Yeah. I also wanted to thank Mr. Kuna and his team, because I know when I spoke to him on Monday, he wasn't too hopeful about being able to get any units put in last week, because it's a lot, I want to make sure people know, it's a lot more complicated than just putting a window in your home. There's a lot more, you know, you take the windows apart, and a lot more assembly and disassembly that's required. And when I followed up with him on, I believe it was Wednesday, he had a crew over, I believe in Fox Hill at that point, installing six units. And so they moved a lot quicker than he thought. So again, I really would appreciate, I really appreciate you and your team for moving as quickly as you could to install what you could.
Any other announcements? Dr. Conti, you're good? All right. So I would also, I'd like to now rearrange the order, take something out of our, you know, Dr. Chen, I'm looking forward to your report, but I, we have our owner's project manager from Doran Whittier, Steve Brown, and our design and architect, Donna Danisco, with us to help us have a discussion about the Thought Exchange question and process. And so I'd like to put them next in the agenda. So if you folks can come up so that we can have that conversation. So did you have an introduction for us, or do you want me to begin the? Okay.
No, I'd be happy to introduce the topic. As most of the committees are aware, we've been working with the Building Committee for quite some time to identify options for the Fox Hill Elementary School. Most recently, the Building Committee has taken a vote and action to reduce the number of options down to two. Those options have been labeled Options Three and Option Six, which is a Fox Hill-only school on the existing site for a student enrollment of 325 students, and a combined Fox Hill-Pine Glen school, again, on the existing Fox Hill site for 640 students. We know that there was quite a bit of work to arrive at that decision, deliberated for many weeks, poring over the data. Thanks to Danisco and their team for evaluating nine separate options and versions of each of those options. So it was quite a bit of work to document existing conditions, site conditions, to arrive at this point. At an earlier Building Committee meeting, there was a discussion and vote to pursue some action or some response from the voters at a town meeting, or a town-wide vote, which subsequently, due to more or less legal reasons and procedures of town meeting, it wasn't quite an option that we could pursue, given the timeline that we're on. But in an effort to solicit feedback from the greater public on pros, cons, and just general feedback on the options at hand, my understanding is the school committee has engaged Thought Exchange as a software-as-a-service survey, I guess is best I could explain it, system, so that the public's feedback could be engaged and responded to. Mohammed from Thought Exchange is our teammate that we've been working with to help establish the Thought Exchange slash survey, so he's made himself available. I tried to give him as much notice as I could to join us and be available if there's any technical questions. But just a general quick synopsis, and I think you have a general understanding of how the platform works, is it's a little bit more open-ended than just a question and answer, or a question and response. So it becomes a little bit more of a challenger, a little bit more thought involvement in determining what that initial question is, because it is reducing it down to one question. So the Building Committee deliberated last week at their regularly scheduled meeting and have proposed a question, which I'm sure you're all aware of. There was some discussion earlier today about, again, how the platform works, and there is an opportunity, other than just launching an open-ended question, where Thought Exchange really does seem to thrive. It's to engage in a discussion, raise issues to the general public, and then have those same participants then respond in the survey. There is a really good opportunity in the Thought Exchange program to give some background and some preamble as to framing that question and trying to frame the types of responses that are provided in response to that question. So I hope you received some information distributed, not too prior to the meeting commencing this evening, but there was an effort just to provide that introduction. It's not intended to be taken word for word. It's really hoping to spark a discussion. It's, the words are, you know, ours is a recommendation, but really the committee's to massage and finally decide upon. There's a lot of the discussion last week on the Building Committee meeting was just the general appropriateness of how broad and how targeted to the Fox Hill or the Burlington Elementary School project should be. And so that's where it's kind of brought from the Building Committee as a recommendation. I believe Dr. Connie has forwarded the language of that question, and we're not proposing a change of that. It's just a suggestion to provide some background information to help introduce the question. And as I often do, I like, I'd like to try to frame and try to begin with the end in mind. And so if the goal is really to get some feedback from the public on what might be supported, or what might be some priorities, or curiosities about the project, it's identifying the right appropriateness of where that question should begin to engage that conversation. So I'm happy to answer any more questions, or if there's specific technical questions about the platform, hopefully Mohammed is available to answer those as well.
Thank you. I think there's a few different pieces to this, and I'm going to try to make it so that everybody can have their input for all of these issues. And one thought would be to just look at the question first and see if people did want to tweak it at all, if people are comfortable with this question. Is that, are people comfortable with starting there? Is this the question we want to ask?
Could you read it out loud?
Yeah, and I will, yeah. The question that we had at the end of the last Building Committee meeting is this. What are some important priorities and perspectives to consider as we plan for improvement of our, improvement of our school buildings? And I just want to know if people had thoughts about keeping that or modifying it. If we're all comfortable with it, then we can move from there. Okay. Question?
No.
Okay. And actually, I saw it written two different ways. One is improvement, and one is improvements. And I don't know, but somebody, maybe the working group can figure out how to finalize that, but, okay? So then the question is that you're bringing to us tonight is a suggestion, and I do feel like that's what we hired you for, is to suggest ways that we can get to the goal that we're looking for, and that we might give an introduction. And the introduction that you drafted, it was sent in an email. Did everyone have a chance to look at it? Okay. It's in an email from Steve Brown this afternoon. And it was, it's at 5:55? Okay. So I will, as you look at it, I will read the, this, well, do you want to take a second to read his introduction? Okay. All right. Give us a minute here. Not everybody had a lot of time beforehand. And I will read the thing. Steve Brown.
Oh, yeah.
For the public, I will read aloud the proposed introduction. Shall I wait a minute so you can? The introductions is being proposed that we can discuss, decide to do, not do, change, whatever we want. It would go, in this Thought Exchange process, it would be the first thing that people would read, and then they would read the question that we just all agreed to. As we look at our current school facilities infrastructure, we are seeking input from the entire Burlington community. We are currently studying the possibility of, one, a new standalone Fox Hill Elementary School, maintaining the existing Pine Glen Elementary School as is, and, two, a new elementary school to include both Fox Hill and Pine Glen schools, but maintaining them as independent schools under one roof. If the solution for the Fox Hill School project is to construct a new facility for Fox Hill School only, the Pine Glen School will remain as is until such time that a direction is determined to update the existing Pine Glen facility. A high school building committee has just been formed, and the options to update the high school will not be known for some time. And then the question will be, what are some important priorities and perspectives to consider as we plan for improvements of our school buildings? And, Chris?
I would just suggest that on number two, where it says a new elementary school to include both Fox Hill and Pine Glen schools, that we fit in there at the Fox Hill site. That's all.
Okay. Are there comments? Ms. Simone?
I think we just, the estimated impact on the residential tax rate, I would just say the average residential tax bill.
Hold on a second. I don't read.
It's at the very bottom of the blue.
Oh. Missed it.
Yeah, I wasn't sure why you didn't read it. Yeah.
I apologize. So after the sentence on the high school building committee.
Thank you. I keep touching it. Let's see, the options for the high school will not be known for some time, and then possibly, we could say, based on rough estimates at this point of the feasibility study phase, the estimated impact on the residential tax rate for option one is $233 per year and $335 for option two. So those are, that's, that's a draft of what we can do and what we would want to consider. So other comment, Mr. Brown? Yeah?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and say that- Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and say that, I think, having worked with the committee for the better part of a year, I personally and the consultant team all have a great appreciation for the weight that this decision carries. And so I thank you for always diving in and challenging some of the information that's been brought forth to you, and so I expect nothing less moving forward. It's an incredibly challenging decision for which you've all been empowered, and rightfully so, given your capacity in this position. As your consultant, we're often engaged to provide advice and in consultation, and hearing some of the feedback at last week's meeting was interesting and, excuse me, challenged how to properly phrase the question, just how broad or how targeted, given the challenges that Burlington's facilities exist in the current state, and trying to prioritize those. So, again, it's not meant to be, this introduction and the phrasing of the question is not meant to be the end-all, be-all. The comment in brackets towards the end that was reread by Ms. Simon, I believe, was optional, if the need was to become more targeted or provide that information to help frame the decision, or to help solicit responses from the public. The general timeline of the Thought Exchange is to initially launch with a question at Monday's community meeting. And that period of response from the community would happen over the course of two weeks. So that's the response, and then also the response from the public to continually engage with the comments that are provided to the system so far. So the community will be encouraged to come back and revisit as the exchange builds itself. There is an opportunity beyond this if a rephrasing of the question were to happen to reengage the community with a more targeted Phase Two. So it's, thank you for your comments, curiosities, and priorities, given the question, and then maybe a second part to that question. So there's an opportunity to do that, framing that in the timeline of the Building Committee and their decision to make a recommendation on a preferred option around the time of just before Thanksgiving, would allow the committee to reengage with a Phase Two. So I just wanted to, in disclosure, present that to the committee and say a few words. So thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bond, did you want to comment?
I mean, I think people know where I stand on this whole process. I keep saying I feel like we're, you know, putting the cart before the horse. The Building Committee for Fox Hill or the Elementary School Committee was formed so that we could make a decision and present that to the community and have them vote on what we have selected based on all of our hard work. And I feel like we're reversing, I get people wanting to get a feel, you know, so we can guarantee whatever we choose is going to be voted on, but it's never been that way before. And not to say I'm willing, not willing to try new things, but I just feel like we defeat the purpose of having a committee if this is how we're going to do it. So other than that, I mean, I think everyone voted to move forward. I will, but I wanted to make my statement.
All right. Other comments? Ms. Monica?
If we're doing this, we're doing this, you know, and it's okay, and the statement's fine, and the question's fine. But I do think that mentioning the high school is out of the realm of the Fox Hill Building Committee. I don't think that should be in there. And I think the "as-is" is a little pejorative, but I can live with it. I think the members of this community can read between the lines and figure out what they want. But I do think it's slightly, slightly leading.
Mr. Brooks?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the initial question as presented. What are some important priorities and perspectives to consider as we plan for improvements of our school buildings?
Second. Okay. Any further discussion on the question?
Are we including this introduction in that, or are we going to vote that separately?
I was planning to vote that separately. Seems like there's some discussion to be had.
So solely on the question? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye, so that's 5-0-0. And we now have our question for the Thought Exchange. So now the question is, do we want an introduction? And if so, what do we want it to say? For example, "as-is," to me, I don't have the same reaction you do, Ms. Monaco, but it was "as-is," seemed, you know, is there a better way for us to say it? Is there another way to say it?
Leave out the "as-is." I mean, nobody's going to touch it. It's a Pine Glen, it's a Fox Hill and a Pine Glen. Why did you write "as-is"?
Mr. Brooks?
Again, through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction as presented with the inclusion of the optional statement addressing the tax rate and adding the language for the annual, excuse me, the average taxpayer.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Are we removing "as-is"?
You didn't remove it.
I did not. It was as presented.
Okay, I would like to have more discussion about "as-is."
Okay, so let's have that, we're discussing.
I agree with that, right. I also would like "as-is" removed, because again, Pine Glen is Pine Glen, and the "as-is" makes it sound so like we're never going to do anything with it, which we know in the future we're going to.
It's totally wrong.
Review something or look into it.
Can we talk one at a time? Okay? Thank you.
Right, yeah, exactly. So I'm just saying that we know in the future we will be looking at Pine Glen, whether that's a renovation or a new school, depending on what is decided on that. So when you leave it "as-is," it makes it sound like we're not going to review and do anything to improve it in the future. I just think that sounds very period-end report.
Okay.
So I would like to have that removed, if possible.
Okay, Ms. Masardo?
I mean, I think that we need to make it more clear that Pine Glen is not getting done at the same time as Fox Hill. I think in the very beginning of this, we were, oh, two new schools, or combined school, two new schools. Mrs. Monaco, I feel very confident that you suggested putting Pine Glen ahead of the high school, and there's just absolutely no plans in any place to touch Pine Glen. And I think we need to make that very clear. Pine Glen will remain "as-is" until such a time that direction is determined to update the Pine Glen facility. That's 100% truth. We have no plans to touch Pine Glen right now. And I think that needs to be made more clear, because in the very beginning of all this, it was, oh, new Pine Glen and new Fox Hill on separate sites. And I think that we've misled the public into believing that, oh, what small Fox Hill, next project is going to be Pine Glen. Pine Glen is not going to get touched for 10 to 15 years.
Hold on, hold on. One at a time. Okay, Ms. Monaco?
First of all, I totally disagree that Pine Glen won't get touched for 10 to 15 years. In fact, I have already suggested in public meetings twice that we ask for money to do a feasibility study for Pine Glen next May. Now, that may not pass, but if it doesn't, I'll ask for it for the following May. So I have absolutely no intention of leaving Pine Glen for 10 to 15 years. The high school is a separate project.
So is Pine Glen.
Yeah, it is. It's a separate project. But you're conflating them, and as the chairman of the Building Committee, you should be focusing on the Fox Hill and if it is combined with Pine Glen. But the Burlington High School feasibility study and Building Committee have nothing, zero, to do with the Fox Hill project. So for you to say that we implied there'd be two new schools is flat-out not true. And second, to say that it won't be touched for 10 to 15 years is outrageous. So I would like to amend the motion to take out the word "as-is" in both paragraphs that it appears in.
Yes. Ms.
Right, and I guess I would like to also just remind everyone that when we submitted the, to MSBA, it was a Fox Hill-only project. They asked us if we would look at combining the two schools. We checked a box saying yes. The previous school committee voted on keeping them separate, and, you know, the intent was to, again, look at a Pine Glen situation, whether it's a renovation or rebuild in the future, and the intent was to continue to focus on Fox Hill and to evaluate the other situation, and somehow it's turned into something completely different. So, again, I would prefer to take out the "as-is," because, again, it makes it sound as if nothing is going to be done.
A point of order that we submitted the statement of interest with the consolidation box checked. The MSBA never came back to us and said, are you sure you want to combine? We submitted that statement of interest with the combination box checked.
Okay, hold on, hold on. So I would like to comment also that there was a vote for four-school model, and I've addressed this before, and I still like having four separate identities in schools. And we hired an OPM and a designer who showed us some options that would allow us to continue with our four identified schools if we were to put the Fox Hill and the Pine Glen School under one roof, but as separate independent schools on the Fox Hill site. And I am very excited about that option, because I see an opportunity to provide a new school for twice as many of our students while maintaining the wonderful Pine Glen identity. I went to an assembly yesterday there that was wonderful, and I know why, you know, the Pine Glen community is excited about and cares so deeply about keeping that. So there's a difference of opinion about what four-school model means. And also, we have new members on our committee, and every time there's a new member on the committee, the decisions of the previous committee at some point have to be followed through on, but they can also be reconsidered. And so I don't think we need to go back anymore to what was said, you know, three years ago, because now we have this committee, and we are making decisions now for what we want to do here. I also want to throw out the possibility of taking out "as-is" for the number one and number two, but in the paragraph below, to leave the sentence that the Pine Glen School will remain as-is until such time that a direction is determined, because that is whether we follow Ms. Monaco's proposal or not, it would, that would be accurate. And I don't know if other people would feel that way, agree with that, but that's a possible way to address this difference of opinion. Ms. Monaco, you had a comment now?
I.
Point of order. You've had two comments on this before, and I have not had a comment.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry I didn't see. Yes, please, Mr. Brooks.
I'd like to make a motion to move the previous question.
You can't do that without four votes of the school committee. So if you want to take a vote on whether to move the question, you need a supermajority. So you need.
It's two-thirds a majority.
You need four votes to move.
Let's put it to a vote. We're talking in circles, and we need to move this along.
And I have never seen this done in a school committee in all the years I've served on this.
I'll move to make the amendment that Martha suggested.
Okay.
Remove "as-is" from the number one and leave the sentence in the second paragraph.
Okay, then I will withdraw my amendment, and I will second Melissa's amendment.
Okay. So to clarify what just happened, is that we have an amendment to Mr. Brooks' motion that we remove the term "as-is" from the first sentence that says, number one, "A new standalone Fox Hill Elementary School, maintaining the existing Pine Glen Elementary School." And that "as-is" would be removed. But in the paragraph below one and two, the sentence would say, "The Pine Glen School will remain as-is until such time that a direction is determined to update the existing Pine Glen facility," and the rest of the wording would be remain the same.
Yes.
So we have an amendment and a second for that. So we're going to vote now on the amendment to Mr. Brooks' motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye, that's 5-0-0. Okay, and now Mr. Brooks' motion to approve the wording as we just changed it, and that would include the sentence in brackets about the tax, estimated tax feasibility, tax rates. Is that correct, Mr. Brooks?
So the original motion included the optional statement when I made it. The only thing that's been amended is the "as-is" portion, so as we approved, that approved with the optional statement included.
Plus my little edit, that says average residential tax bill.
Correct.
Average residential tax bill. Okay, so we have, I didn't catch that, but.
Steve, I'm replying to you.
Average residential tax. Average residential tax rate, okay. All right. Is there any further discussion before we vote on this motion? Mr. Dr. Connie?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The chair votes aye, that's 5-0-0. Okay? And perhaps, do you have all that accurately, Mr. Brown? For us to put into our minutes to make sure?
I've been trying to, so let me just try to restate it, and then we're good? Okay, so the first part will be the introduction, right, that will then follow. So as we look to our current school facilities infrastructure, we are seeking input from the entire Burlington community. We're currently studying the possibility of, one, a new standalone Fox Hill Elementary School, maintaining the existing Pine Glen Elementary School, and, two, a new elementary school to include both Fox Hill and Pine Glen schools at the Fox Hill site, but maintaining them as independent schools under one roof. If the solution for the Fox Hill School project is to construct a new facility for Fox Hill School only, the existing Pine Glen will remain as-is until such time that a direction is determined to update the existing Pine Glen facility. A high school building committee has just been formed, and the options to update the high school will not be known for some time. Based on rough estimates at this point of the feasibility study phase, the estimated impact on the average annual residential tax rate for option one is $233 and $335 for option two.
Can you just say "bill" instead of "rate"?
Annual residential tax bill. Thank you.
Yes.
And unparenthese those, and that's fine. My only other comment, as I was reading it, and to respond to some other comments, so if I'm inappropriate, feel free to tell me that. I was just wondering if we take the quotations, quotation marks off of "as-is," because that kind of makes it stand out a little bit more.
Okay. Mr. Brooks, you made the motion. Are you comfortable with that?
I'd like to leave the motion as we voted on it.
You'd like to leave it, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on that?
I move, we remove the quotation marks on "as-is." I would second that.
Okay. Christine? Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
No.
And the chair votes no. So we will leave it "as-is." Leave it with the quotation marks on that one. So we now have, to clarify, an introduction and a question for a Thought Exchange process, which we're all new to, except I think Mr. Brown has done it once before.
As a participant.
As a participant. And I know that Mr. Hassan is here to answer some questions, and a question I had, that I got a partial answer to, but I wanted to ask so people understand the process a little bit more. We were able to try it out at our school building committee meeting last week, and I was a little uncertain about some aspects. So one was that there were 23 of us on the school building committee, and there were 1,700 responses. So the reason that was is because it was, we were sort of tagged on to a different project and a different question from a different community, and it was just to show us how it worked. So if we have, you know, 100 people who reply to our Thought Exchange question, we will get 100 responses. We won't get 1,700 responses. If we have 500 people, we will get 500 responses. So is that accurate, Mr. Brown?
Mo was on. I don't know if he jumped off.
Well, he's.
But that is accurate.
Do you want me to banter that?
Ah, okay. Is that accurate, Mr. Hassan?
That is correct. Just want to set the expectation that just because 100 people would come in and participate in the exchange, doesn't necessarily mean you'll get 100 thoughts, just because people would come in, look at the exchange, and jump directly into rating the exchange or rating the other thoughts and not share anything. That's possible as well. So you could have 100 people participate in the exchange, and maybe only 70 share thoughts, and then the other 30 jumped in, skipped sharing, jumped right into rating the thoughts of other people, finished that exercise, and then left. So that's possible as well. But to your point about last week, 700 thoughts, that was a demo exchange, and that's the only reason you saw all of those. only reason you saw all of those.
Okay.
I hope that answers the question.
That did. Thank you. My other question has to do with this understanding of it being more of a dialogue... Dialogue or conversation. So once I put in my submission, and then I look and see at other, look at other people's submissions, then I have a chance to go back in and comment on their submissions. Is that accurate?
Not entirely. So basically, the reason it's a dialogue is because you are able to share your feedback, your opinion, or your thought, and you're also able to then rate the thoughts of other people. So what you're looking at is agreement or disagreement between what is being discussed in a group. So you can't comment on the thoughts of other people, but you can rate them, like whether you agree or disagree, or that you think it's neutral. That's what we mean by engaging conversations, as opposed to a survey, which is kind of like one-way dialogue. It's not only a dialogue, you're just selecting response options from selected options. Here, you can share your feedback in your own words, and then you can see thoughts of many other people in the room, as many as you want to see, and rate them based on what is aligned with your values.
So if I can ask a follow-up question, if I read other people's comments and I disagree with them, do I also have the opportunity to give, say, a counterargument or provide other information?
Absolutely. So you have the option to go back and forth when you're in the platform as a participant. So I could jump in, I read the introduction, I answer, let's say, I added one thought, and then I jumped into the thoughts of other people, I went and rated a few more, and then I have a few more ideas, right? So some more thoughts that I don't completely agree with, I can go back to share option and share more thoughts as well. I can go back and forth. Now, just to continue, let's say I spent 10 minutes in the exchange, I shared two thoughts, rated about 20 thoughts, I jumped off, and let's say a couple of days I come back in again, I can do that. I can share more thoughts if I wanted to, and I can go back and rate more thoughts. So people have the option to jump in and out up until the exchange is open. So that's the two-week window we were talking about.
Okay, thank you. Are there other school committee members who have a question? About the process. Yes, Dr. Conti.
Again, not a committee member, so I'll give the committee members...
Yeah.
Mohammed or Steve, again, thank you for your support on this. I'm actually excited to give this tool a try. There were some quick tips that were part of the introduction that I'm assuming you're going, we're going to include. And again, they say the exchange is anonymous, so I want to make sure that that's stressed. Again, thoughts will be shared with others, but not your identity. So that's part of the thought exchange, is it's an anonymous conversation. There are some sort of ground rules about being respectful, and thoughts that include identifying information or that are inappropriate will be removed. So I think that's part of the ground rules of this, of this activity. And please try to rate at least 20 or 30 thoughts and come back, often to rate new thoughts, and discover the results at any time. And again, that's going to be over that two-week window. So again, I just want to make sure that those are sort of the, that's also going to be part of the introduction of this tool. And so does anyone want to add any other sort of ground rules, I guess is what I'm going to...
Yes, Mr. ...
Not necessarily a ground rule, just like when we introduced this to the community, we foot-stomp. It's important that you fill out the demographic information. It is anonymous.
That's going to get next, but...
Oh, sorry. Yep, so we get to foot-stomp the demographic information because without accurate demographic information, it won't correlate properly, and it doesn't really give us as clear a picture where folks are landing based on, you know, those metrics.
Okay. Dr. Conti?
Perfect lead-in. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, Madam Chair. And again, the worksheet that we all had is the demographics are, what is your role in the district? And there are four options, staff member, parent, guardian, student, community member/other.
I'd like to comment on that unless you're, if, when you're done with that question.
No, I have a comment, but please go ahead.
So I'd like to ask the committee if we think, I think it might be useful to have people also identify if they're town meeting members, because there will be a separate vote at town meeting to approve or not approve funding this project, and that's one of my concerns. So I'd like input from other committee members and Dr. Conti on that.
I think that's too deep for this survey.
And it removes a little bit of anonymity because there's only a certain finite number of town meeting members. So it could be, you know, with the full demographic plus the town meeting, it could really narrow down, you know, some precincts that have very few town meeting members, you can figure out who it is real quickly.
Other comments on that?
Again, my only question is, we have staff members who are also parents, and do we leave it up to them to sort of identify how they would want?
Yes. The proposal was that we could have a multi-select. I was told that they could then choose to be, identify as a staff member and as a parent, or a community member and a staff member, or...
So again, I just want to be clear then with, I know Mohammed's listening, so that demographic would be a multi-select. So again, just all's your understanding, you could check one, two, or three boxes?
I would prefer that.
I think you need to do that on the school one, like what school do my children attend as well?
Yep.
Yes.
So that's next.
I just think that functionality is there.
So in terms of the first question, it sounded like we're not going to add a fifth category, and we are going to make that question a multi-select. And now question two, we just referenced, we'd like it to be a multi-select, and other comments? Dr. Conti?
Again, Madam Chair, you're ahead of me, so just read the question. So again, currently have children in the Burlington Public Schools. Which school do they attend, or which school or schools? We could probably put parentheses with an S there after schools. So again, in the, there are also categories for future students, past students, or no students. So again, is that's fully inclusive of the demographics, again, that are going to help us utilize the information that we have. I really couldn't think of any other...
Categories.
Category. And again, it's important, again, for me to keep mentioning that the forum on Monday is for all residents, whether you have school-aged children or are not part of, don't have a connection to the schools.
Okay. I believe there's a question from somebody online. Mimi, would you identify yourself, and you could speak now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Looking at two new elementary schools, which I would support if the town is financially ready to do that, but my priority is still the high school.
Okay. Ms. Monaco?
The feasibility study for the high school, I believe, would take quite a bit of time.
What audio we're getting at this point?
It's from her. I just muted her.
Okay, so I'll tell you what, we're going to continue to talk about these questions, Mimi, and maybe you... Do you know how to help her fix it? Should she come back in? Mr. Kuna, can she leave the meeting, come back in, and try again?
I'm wondering if potentially she has a TV on or some other recording that's playing.
But that was like our voices.
That was a recording from a previous meeting.
Right, but...
Oh, okay.
It sounded like they were playing back.
All right. So let's finish this question, go through this next question, and then we'll try again, Mimi, okay? So did we final, was there any additional question on the current children in the schools? No. So the next question, Dr. Conti.
Can you hear me?
Ah, we can hear you now. You want to try again?
Oh, you can hear me?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm not quite sure what the issue is. Can you hear me okay?
We need to compare apples to apples.
Now, there's an additional, there's a recording that comes on over your voice?
So it's, I don't know what the issue is.
Okay, why don't you just try...
I just wanted to ask a clarifying...
Okay.
I wonder if she's in the car, maybe, or...
Can you, you know what, you're coming in and out. Could you try typing your question into the chat?
Or email me.
Or email, is there a chat available? Or no, I'm meeting...
I can turn it on if you want.
Mr. Kuna's going to turn on the chat for a minute, and if you can try putting it in the, in the chat box, we'll see if we can get you that way. Okay? And we'll keep, I want to be able to answer your question, but let's keep going while you're doing that. So the next question, Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair, is which elementary school district is your home located in? And it says multiple choice, so I'm assuming you can only pick one, and then...
This one I don't think should be multiple choice yet.
Not multi-select, right.
Oh, I got you.
Well, there are a lot of kids who have siblings in a, for instance, some of the Pine Glen programs have children that go to...
Well, this is more about where your home is located. Where your home is located.
What district is your home located in? So your children may go to other schools.
Got it.
Okay?
One, two, three.
And there is the option for people who aren't looking at this of, I don't know, because there may be people in town who don't know, which is very reasonable. Okay?
So those, that's the demographic information. So again, as long as you're all in agreement, that's going to be sort of how we sort this information. And we, I'm not sure we can go back and get more demographic information, so I just wanted to make sure we covered this. And in looking at it, I thought this demographic information would be helpful with Steve or Donna, Mohammed. I didn't think of anything else that would, that was glaringly not included there.
Is there anyone who thinks there's another category we should include here? No. Ms. Monaco? In this section.
Yes, so I'm thinking about the anonymity aspect of it, and I think this kind of defeats the purpose to, to some extent. And I wonder if you might want to have an option to keep it to yourself. Like, why do you have to choose this in order to, in order to be part of this?
Mr. Brooks, do you have a...
Through the chair. So the way this program works with the demographic information, it'll correlate the data to multiple data points. So you can refine out and look at the data from several different perspectives. So if you wanted to see just Pine Glen with staff members, you could kind of feel them out. And then again, for parents in, you know, say, Fox Hill and Francis Wyman, you could look at their responses, and it just helps correlate the data to something and make it a little more meaningful. That's why the baseline's really important.
And it's, it's my understanding that it's not like we're going to hear that there's a staff member who's also a parent and a community member at Francis Wyman and lives in this other district. We're not going to get that information. That's going to be used by the program. So I don't see any problem with it removing the anonymity. Ms. Bond?
I guess, I mean, I understand what you're saying if we were trying to contact all these people and change their mind, but that's really not the purpose of this. So, you know, I guess I kind of asked that question, too, is, you know, why not leave an option to opt out and not check anything?
Nor am I suggesting we're going to contact folks. Again, it just lets the program run as intended to correlate the data to what we're trying to ask. So without that, you're asking a question with no context and no way to review it in a meaningful way.
Ms. Monaco?
So I'm getting 1,000 text messages here, and, and what people are telling me is, why can't we have a box that says, "Prefer not to say"? You know, some people don't want to tell you where their kids go to school. And so I, I don't care. You do what you want.
Other comments on this?
I feel like we get, I think the, for me, my opinion is that the purpose of this is
to get more information, and that if we take that out, we get less information. So to me, and it does not, to me, I don't see any way it would hurt the anonymity. So I feel like more information is better. And if somebody is, it's not going to be shared who they are, it's just going to give us in more information about it.
What if they don't choose anything? What if they just leave it blank?
That's their choice.
Okay.
If that's an option, I don't know. Mr. Hassan, does this program allow people not to choose one of these options?
Fortunately, at this point, no, the survey questions will need to be answered in order for them to proceed into the open-ended question.
Mr. Brooks?
They would have to select an option.
Mohammed Hassan, just to clarify, again, to maybe address Ms. Monaco and Ms. Bond's point a little more clearly, the questions as asked, the demographics as asked, aren't front-facing, so the data that comes out of the backend that administrators have access to would still let anonymity happen, but the folks answering questions would not know any of that demographic information.
Correction, correct, as they answer?
Yes. Those who... Participants would not know. They would not see the response, the options, the response options to the survey questions. So they're not going to know the demographics. We will know in the backend, the demographics, based on what percentage of people were, or staff members, what percentage were parents and guardians, what percentage were students, and so on and so forth. But there's no way to link any, any thought or any response, any options, any response options, back to somebody who answered the questions or participated in the exchange. That's how we maintain the anonymity. I also heard there was another option being asked about adding one more demographic option there. At Thought Exchange in the backend, if the response options are below five per option, so if the number of responses are below five per option, then we will hide that information. The system does that automatically. That is also to maintain user or survey taker anonymity. So if in case there is, let's say, just five, less than five students who take the survey, who take the exchange, their information will be, will be hidden. You'll not see it, as an example.
Right. Ms. Bond? Can we add an opt-out? Because I don't think you're going to have everybody opting out.
You're still going to get some of that data, but there are people who may not want to share that information. And why not? If we're trying to be open, you know, and trying to accommodate as many people and get as many people to participate, why not make everyone as comfortable as possible to participate?
Other opinions on that? Okay, so I, I think we'll move on then. The next...
I'd like to make a motion to add that.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we add an opt-out or something so that you don't have to declare, you know, for each of those three questions, for those people who, you know, may not want to declare that information.
Okay.
So that we can be all-inclusive.
Okay.
Second, and I have a comment to make.
Okay.
I really wish this committee could work together. That's my comment.
I agree 100%. Thank you. Is there any further comment on the motion to add an opt, a no, I don't want to answer option? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
And the chair votes no, so we will leave it. Well, sometimes we have three to two votes, and we have in the past done that, and I hope that people will support the group as we go forward, as we've had this opportunity to discuss people's opinions and think of ideas that might improve it. And likewise, when the school building committee gets to the place where they make a final decision, I plan to support whatever that decision is, even if it wasn't my first choice. And I hope that, and I will work really hard to get that option passed through town meeting and through the town vote, and I hope that everyone else will be able to do that as well. Dr. Conti, would you continue with the next set of questions? There, those three questions were the demographics, and now we have the sentiment questions.
Right, and I just needed some clarification on the sentiment question.
Okay.
So again, Mohammed, I can understand when people are going to approach the, this thought exchange, assuming they're going to do the demographic information first?
Yes, very good.
And then, then the introduction?
No, so the flow is, they're getting the exchange, they'll see the question as a primer first, then they'll get onto, they'll see the introduction, they'll see, you know, why we're running this exchange, including the quick tips that I shared, then they'll jump onto the survey questions. Now, the survey questions, which is both demographic and the sentiment, if we add any of them, that flow will be controlled by us in terms of the way we kind of plan the exchange, or the way we kind of organize the survey questions. So if you have the demographics first, they'll see those survey questions first. If we have, if we have any sentiment questions following, they will see the sentiment question. If we have any sentiment questions following, they will see the sentiment questions after. Once they have completed the survey questions in totality, they will then jump onto the exchange question, which is the open-ended question, which is the share and rate options.
And between, then, the survey questions and the.
The thought exchange question will be the introduction? Is that correct?
So as soon as they jump in the exchange, I think the first option is where they, sorry, I missed one part, they select the language. I think Google now shares about more than 100 different languages, so they can take the exchange or survey in any language that they prefer. And then they, I think they will just see the exchange question as just the first intro. It's just to tell them, this is what the exchange is about. And then it'll start off by showing them the introduction first, then it'll show them the survey questions that they have to answer, that is mandated, and then following the survey questions, they'll jump onto the exchange question, the open-ended question.
So the introduction would be first?
Be first, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And so I also have the question from Ms. Bix Highland now, and I'd like to read that. I hope you're still, I see you're still on the call, and what she was asking, and this is probably for you, Mr. Hassan, if a person can have more than one response, would their responses have a disproportionate weight?
That's a good question. I shared something back with Bob, that's a link. I'll share the back to the entire group if needed, to Eric later on. But basically, that's a valid question, but the algorithm works very hard in the backend to make sure that every question, sorry, every thought or every feedback that is shared has been seen equally amongst all of the participants. So that way, it's kind of completely anti-bias. There's no thought that's biased. It isn't about how many thoughts a person shared, or who shared, it's about how important is that thought. So a person could come in and share one thought, and that thought could rise up to the top of the entire exchange, meaning everyone agrees to this. Whether that person shared one thought, 10 thoughts, it doesn't really matter. But just because he shared 10 thoughts doesn't mean his 10 thoughts will be seen by everyone. It is completely random. The algorithm in the backend works very hard to make sure that every thought is equally viewed. That being said, there is always some thoughts, like the last person who walks into the exchange and shares a thought, his thought may not be seen by everyone, just because that's the last exchange, sorry, that's the last thought, and then we're going to close the exchange an hour later. So that caveat is there, but then generally, it is very anti-bias. Every thought gets equally seen, every thought is equally rated.
Well, go ahead, Dr. Conti.
Mohammed, can I try to just rephrase Ms. Bix Highland's question? Is if I identify as a staff member and as a parent and enter a thought, is that looking like there's two people entering that thought, or am I entering it as one person?
So depending on how you answer the survey question. If you answer the survey question, as I'm entering, as coming, I've come in as one person, and I've selected I'm a parent and a staff, it doesn't really matter. That is just the demographic answers, and you're going to see those responses on the survey analytics, survey results, but you'll still share one thought. So it'll come in as a thought from one person, not from two persons. That being said, as a parent, sorry, as a staff, I could come in, get into thought exchange, enter one thought as a staff, and then I can exit, come back in again, select I'm a parent, and share another thought as a parent. That can be done as well. So then that would come in, that would enter as, that would be entered as two persons and two thoughts.
They would have to have two different emails for that.
Is that correct?
Is that correct?
True. It depends on, if we're going to have the email option open. I'm not sure if that was discussed here. And if we're going to have the email option, they have to log in, then yes, they'll have to enter two email addresses. If they come in with the same email address, the system will recognize them as the same person, and then the same person come in and share additional thoughts, but it will not increase the number of people who entered the exchange. They'll be the same person. So let's say, one person, same email address comes in twice, because the system will recognize the email address, it will be calculated as, taken as one person, but multiple thoughts.
So that's if the person identifies themselves as the same person in two different emails. But if they don't, then they could submit.
Submit twice.
Right, it will be the email address that the system will recognize, because they're logging in with the email address. If they come in with a separate, different email address, the system will not recognize them as the same person. It will take them in as a new person.
Dr. Conti, did you have something to add? This does make it sound a lot more complicated.
More complicated to me. So I just, do people want to consider whether we should, what we should do with this? Yes, Ms. Bond?
I think you're right, because, I mean, I know I have multiple email addresses. I could log in as five people and put my thoughts in five times as five different people. And there's no way, I think, to control that. Not that I would do that, but I'm just saying it's possible.
So, Dr. Conti, would you like to suggest a way forward on this? Shall we just leave it as is and trust people to give one comment?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to trust people. The only way I would think about it is if you, what your role in the district is to take off the multi-select and just to say, staff member, parent guardian, student, community member, or staff member, parent guardian combined, or something like that. But I'm not sure that would, if you only have one, not a multi-select, but one option, I guess that would help clarify that. I'm not sure we're going to be able to prevent people coming in with multiple emails and just ask that they, the thought exchange is going to allow them to enter and respond to as many thoughts as they want to. So I don't think we're limiting people to one interaction. I don't think that's the way the tool works, so.
Right.
And I'm not sure there's necessarily a benefit for how many thoughts you have. It's going to be getting others to comment on your thoughts, that I think is how this is weighted. So I don't think it's a big hurdle. I think that, so I'm sort of okay with sort of how we're looking at it.
Mohammed, you have a comment? And I see.
Yeah, I wanted to add to what I said about. It's not exactly about how many thoughts are in there. So one person could come in and share one thought or share multiple thoughts, whether they're sharing it as that one person or using multiple different emails to come in as different people to share thoughts. It really is about getting the thoughts prioritized based on what's important to the values of the other people. So people are going to see those thoughts. If they like it, then that's a good thought, that's good feedback, and it's good opinion that is liked amongst the larger group. It doesn't matter who it came from or how many people it came from. You know, one person could have multiple various great ideas, and maybe that is good. So just want to kind of call that out, saying that it doesn't really matter how many thoughts a person shares. It's really about that agreement and disagreement around what's important to the values of the people. And at the end of the results, what you're going to see is, you might have 100 thoughts, they'll be bucketed into different themes, and you'll see the thoughts which are most liked and most agreed upon and most valued upon. That's the ones that's going to rise to the top, and that's what we want to focus on, understanding where do people agree and come together, and also understand where do people disagree, where there is contention.
Dr. Conti?
No, again, that's how the product works.
So I think we just got to let it play out, and then, I'm trying to move us a little bit, because we have some policy work to do. On the next survey questions, the sentiment questions, I don't really see the value in them, and I'll explain my reasoning, because if, it's important to maintain and upgrade existing school buildings and facilities, for instance is one of those. If there's a significant member of the population of residents of Burlington who don't think that's important, I do, and the committee has always thought that. So Mohammed, I'm not sure of why we're asking these type of questions, because we're, again, my perspective is, this body is always going to want to maintain and upgrade classrooms and school building facilities.
So I'd like to just take a moment to see if people have any other opposite thoughts to what Dr. Conti's proposing. The, yeah, so I think then what we're suggesting is that we would not use.
Madam Chair, you have a hand?
Oh, I'm sorry. We also have a hand raised.
Amanda.
So Amanda, would you like to ask your question now or make your comment?
I just threw a question in the chat. It was from the demographic questions. I heard Mohammed say that in order to complete the entire survey, those need to be filled in completely. Each question would need to be answered. I just want to make sure there's an option for staff members who are completing this who don't live in town, so they wouldn't be able to answer that question, what district is your house in? Just so that they can successfully be able to get through those demographic questions to actually get to the end of the survey.
Amanda, there is an, I don't know, or not applicable. We can add not applicable to that on that particular question.
Is staff would be directed to select the.
Not applicable.
Again, I think if it's asked them where their home is, then I would assume they would know if they live in a different community, then it wouldn't be applicable.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. That was a good question.
Okay, so we will add not applicable to the I don't know? Okay. So are people in agreement, then, that we will eliminate, we will delete the sentiment questions? I am satisfied with. It is important for, it is important to maintain, it is important to involve, and it prioritizes. Mr. Brooks?
I'm not necessarily opposed to it, because again, we're going to get more value out of our hard-earned money, or the money that's getting spent on this, to get these demographic questions answered, excuse me, the sentiment questions answered, and it could provide some valuable data moving forward.
Other comments? I guess I would rather have a separate conversation and thought exchange. We did purchase a one-year opportunity to use this, so if we have other things that we want to ask as a school department, that we could do that. So I don't see anyone else thinking we should keep them, so I think we'll.
Just, again, please, I would kind of want to ask Mohammed, the purpose of these sentiment questions, is what I would say. Is it this for background? Is it important for the answering of the other questions we have? If there's a reason for them, I would support them. I'm not strongly saying one way or the other. I'm just, I guess I'm sort of maybe hoping that we won't have a lot of people who strongly disagree that we need to modernize our classrooms and facilities over time. That's kind of what I was, maybe that's my sentiment that I'm expressing that doesn't belong here.
Dr. Conti, I totally agree with you, but hope isn't a course of action, so I think this, again, provides us some valuable data on how we can move forward and, you know, get some of those comments to feedback with it.
So Mohammed, are these questions critical to the thought exchange?
The shot answer to the question, Eric, is no. They were just suggested as optional questions if you wanted some additional data. So you could get some good data from here, you get good quantitative data that can help you for future conversations. As an example, and you're right, maybe you don't have to use all of them, maybe you don't use any of them, it's really optional. But in terms of how can they help, first of all, they can get you some great quantitative data that can help you for future conversations and look at other priorities in the future. It also can help you kind of, just like the way you can use the demographic data to filter down into the thought exchange responses, you can use these sentiment questions, because this is also a survey question, to kind of help drill down into your sentiment, into your thought exchange responses. So as an example, I am satisfied with the current condition of school buildings. You can look at, okay, the people who strongly disagree and disagreed to this, what are their thoughts? What did they kind of rate highly in the thought exchange, as opposed to those who agreed and strongly agreed? That's a kind of, you know, filter and dive in that you can do with the sentiment questions. Another thing you can also do with sentiment questions are the fact that you could compare two different survey questions. So if I was to select, let's say, as an example, what is your role in the district? Take the responses of that survey question and compare it against this first sentiment question to see what are the staff saying, what are the parents saying, what are the students saying? You know, which group mostly agrees or strongly disagrees to this question, this question around the conditions of school buildings? That's the other thing you could do with these questions.
Understanding that more information is better. Is it possible to make the demographic survey questions required and these questions optional, I guess, or not continue, or would they both need to be required to move forward into the thought exchange?
So I kind of divided the two into two different sections, just for ease of understanding at this point for you folks. Unfortunately, from our standpoint, these are all survey questions, and at this point, I know this is something we are working on, because some of our partners have asked us for this. At this point, though, it is mandated. Somebody coming in, you'll have to answer all the survey questions.
In the name, I think, I have a sense that.
Did not want to include them. And did I get the sense of the committee correct?
Yes.
That we wanted to delete these questions, or should we take a vote on it?
So I'll make a motion to add the sentiment questions as presented.
Second, sorry.
To include the sentiment questions as presented?
Correct. I make a vote to remove them, as some would like them removed.
Well, did we have a second on this?
I did.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, the opposite of that, to remove them.
All right, so we do need to take a vote on.
I mean, if they don't pass, then they're not going.
Yeah, then they won't be in. Okay. So is there any further discussion? So we're voting on whether to include, yes means yes, include the sentiment questions, and no means to delete them. That's my understanding of the motion. Okay. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The chair votes no, and so that's 2-3-0, and the motion does not pass. So we will not include the sentiment questions in this discussion. And does that complete our need to give school committee input into this thought exchange process, and it will now go back to the school building committee for the procedural? Actually, I wanted to get back if Mimi Bix Highland, if you, your question was answered or if you had a follow-up question, you don't have your hand up, but if you had a further question before we move off of this topic. And Steve and Donna, do you have anything else that you need from this committee tonight regarding the thought exchange? And we can move forward with this and with Mo and with the thought exchange people now? Okay.
And again, Madam.
Yes, Dr. Conti?
My understanding is we don't need another vote of the school building committee. I think we're sort of set to move forward. And again, this thought exchange is going to be utilized at Monday's community meeting to discuss these issues, and that is Monday, September 18th, and it is at the high school auditorium between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. The meeting will be hybrid. It'll also be broadcast over B cap, but we'd really like people to attend in person and participate in the conversation, but also participate in this thought exchange. The more information we have, the better decisions that we can make moving forward. So, and we sent out a, what is it, Bob, a Code Red call tonight, and we're sending out a reminder, call, email, and text on Friday evening, and then would encourage people to attend.
Okay, thank you. So now, thank you for your time tonight, and we'll now move on, Dr. Conti, to the next part of the agenda, learning, equity, and thriving.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chen.
Hi, for the sake of time, I'm just going to keep this really brief, because I know that we have a lot of policy work to do tonight, but you're going to hear for about the journey to cares in the next school committee meeting, but just wanted to report to you that continuing on with the entry plan, also, the two big things that I'm working on is taking a look at our curriculum, pre-K through 12. And so I've already met with the math folks, and what I mean by that is sitting on there as some preliminary discussions to take a look at our math progression and how we're doing with math and how students are achieving math, pre-K through 12. What we've done is Carrie Fortinato sits on there, she's the lead math coach of pre-K through 5. We also have Michael Fryman, and he happens to be the program, or they call him program coordinators at the middle school, and Katie Wickham, who is the department chair also at the high school. And also, the administrators of those schools as well, too, are sitting in with me on that. And so we've begun some discussions, and we're going to start taking a look at the data. The other thing is, I'm also doing that, also, the same process is also occurring at the science, and we're taking a look at that because this year in particular, because of how our schedule has been, and we have had to, instead of having, you know, five days of science, we've had to reduce it to four days of science with one day. of science, we've had to reduce it to four days of science with one day going towards our SEL curriculum, which is important. And because of that, we just want to make sure that whatever kids get in science, it continues to do the progression of what's in the middle school and what's in the high school. So we're really taking a look at those two. Just a really brief update, just so that you know that, at the same time, we're going to be hosting some SEL nights for our parents, so that they will know what the social emotional learning curriculum is going to be. We're hoping to invite all parents and guardians, especially at the elementary schools, on Tuesday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Francis Wyman. Chrissy Concepcion will be providing all the parents with what wave finder takes a look at, what we're doing in the classroom with it, and also how parents or caretakers can help support the social emotional learning curriculum that's occurring at the middle school. At the same time, we're also hosting another event on October 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. about the social emotional curriculum that is also occurring at the middle school. That's going to be from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., because that is a very big initiative that we're working on. And just to piggyback on what Mrs. Monaco says, I do want to give a shout out and a thank you to all the people in the Board of Health, because they are partnering with us to ensure that our students will get the immunizations that are needed, and in fact, and please forgive me for saying your last name incorrectly, Susan, can you help me with this? Her last name?
Lumina.
Lumina.
Is that right, Eric?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, so excuse me, she has been gracious enough also to be working with us and to providing some nurses that will be coming to a day here on campus to help and provide those vaccinations for our students in need of them. And so we are grateful for her support. And, yeah, and I've met with every single administrator, spoken to them, I'm meeting, going down through the department heads, the program leaders as well, too, and also I've met with some parents, and I'm going to be continuing to go to a lot of the activities that are going on, but just getting a lot of great insights and had a lot of great conversations with parents, and also with teachers, and also with, at the same time, with administrators. So just very grateful to be here. It's a lot of good work, but it's great work. So thank you.
Martha?
Thank you, Ms. Masardo.
I'm looking forward to the SEL curriculum night. I was wondering if you had plans for a math curriculum night? I know that there's a lot of commentary around that.
Yes, so what's going on right now, too, is happy to really announce that we're also bringing Math Olympiad back. That's the math contest to help engage students at the elementary schools. We put a posting on that. And yes, Carrie Fortinato today spoke to all of our administrators that we're going to be looking at a math family night, activity night, and that we've also spoken to the elementary principals as well, too. We also want to do something with RTI, that process as well, too, and also to speak with them about reading and also science. So all of that has been brought forth to the elementary principals, and so we are just solidifying the days and the nights in which all of this is going to happen. But the math family nights, the way it's done previously, it was hosted at each individual elementary school, and this was a time in which families and also students could get together, and the students would demonstrate their learning in maths. So yes, that is coming down the pipeline.
Yeah, Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brooks.
Just an informational question on the curriculum review. So what is the output going to be from all the reviews and the meetings you're having? Are we focusing on or looking at it through a lens of identifying COVID learning loss gaps, or, you know, what's going to be the output of these meetings?
So what's going on is, we're still at the beginning stages, because I think one of the things that I've learned that we do extremely well is that we do a lot of good work, right? But sometimes within our transition from elementary to middle school, to also to high school, there's a loss of communication as to what we've taught, right? And so when we're looking at this as a continuum, one of the things that we focus, both as a short and long-term goals, is to take a look at, for instance, the Algebra I, that's been something that's been brought up, and I know that the gentleman had brought up about what are the accelerations that we're offering, right? So that's going to be a very big topic that we're going to be talking about. And if we decide to put in Algebra I in the middle school, it's going to have a progression of what goes on at the high school, what is then going to be taught at the middle school, and then how it's going to impact the elementary school. Now, I've asked Carrie Fortinato to go ahead and look at the numbers that we have in math, and she's already told me, and just looking at it, that we do have a group of students already at the elementary school that's going to benefit from, not necessarily differentiation and deeper learning, but more so acceleration, right? And so we're creating and taking a look at those pathways. The other things that we're also taking a look at is ensuring that the proper placements are being made for students, especially as they transition to the high school. So we're taking a hard look at what these assessments are. We've also started to talk about common assessments, because there is, we seem to be able to do, there is a lack of consistency in our common assessments. So there's a lot of work to be done, and in all truth, what I've learned also through this process, it's been about 15 years since we've done a curriculum review in math, so it is just really trying to focus based on these honest and open conversations of what are the priorities, what are the short-term goals, and then what are the long-term goals? And at every juncture, as I begin and I find out more stuff, I'll be presenting it to you, and then at the same time, we're also going to be taking a look at data. And we're also asking some outside consultants. I have someone that I've worked very closely with, and I do love her name, because she's going to bring it. Her name is Dr. Katiri Thunder, and believe it or not, her name is Dr. Thunder. She's not a wrestler, her name is Dr. Thunder, and she works as a research person up at NC for the National Council of Teachers in Mathematics, so she has the research knowledge. She's also written a lot of books. She's very renowned in what she does, and especially with understanding elementary math, and she's worked with John Hattie's Research, Invisible Learning, and with Doug Fisher, Nancy Frye. And so she's worked with a lot of curriculum development, and I think that this is someone that we could use her expertise in. And so this is someone I'm also bringing in to a group of our math leaders to see what questions they may have. And so there are just a lot of places for us to begin with, but I would say, in response to your question, it is to develop greater consistency. It is to develop common assessments. It is to develop very clear look-for's at each of the grade levels, so that both parents and students and also teachers are all using the same common language. I think that this is something that the teachers have wanted. I had the opportunity to attend a math meeting at the high school, and I will tell you that I'm so impressed with our teachers, and I will, I will tell you that, and I know that this has been a longstanding tradition, but the math teachers this year at the high school, and they all agreed upon this, and this wasn't because, you know, I mandated anything. This was because we had conversations about this, and Katie Wickham led a very excellent meeting, and at the same time, she also let the teachers think about this, because it's about the kids and what experience we want them to have, right, at the end of the day. And so she asked them the question, and so one of the things, because this hasn't been done in five years, so this is a big move here, but it's a good move, is that all formative and summative assessments will now be returned back to students after they have all taken them, right, with caveats, so that if, for instance, there's someone that's out for a month, we're not waiting a month to return back these assessments. Now, if students at the same time want to keep them in the teacher's classroom, that is still being allowed. But now, instead of, and they've always had a way of going over this, doing review packets, but now the students will physically be able to take it home. There's a caveat with the exception of midterms and finals, that's completely understandable, and also AP exams. And the reason why with AP assessments is because we are, by the college board, told that we cannot release some items. So this has nothing to do with Burlington or the school committee, or we don't want to share stuff. It is just what AP college board has said to us, and they will slap our hands, and we don't want them to slap our hands. So it's just a lot of great questions that are coming up, but I applaud these teachers because I think that they want this alignment, and it's just, for me, this is very exciting, because the outcome is, it's going to be great for kids.
Thank you for answering the question, and that was great. Look forward to seeing it, and then, you know, helping some of our kids that don't necessarily need acceleration, but need to be lifted up to, I think it's going to work well for them.
And I know that we were, Dr. Conti had shared with me an article, because this is coming down our pipeline anyways, because Cambridge is going to, and that's such a very big school system, they're, they're going to be adopting Algebra in their middle school curriculum. And then we have other districts, I'm sorry, they're called districts here, not divisions, we have other districts that do have Algebra I in the middle school. And so for a group of kids who need that acceleration, we need to challenge those kids, too. That's the bottom line.
Ms. Monaco?
I was going to ask you about the math. So basically, what you're saying is the kid's going to be able to take their tests home?
Yes.
Okay. And on the algebra, to me, that's a really big deal.
It's huge.
My initial training was as a mathematics teacher. That changed over time, but I think that you hit the nail on the head when you said there's a group of students that need algebra in the middle school. I mean, they're so ready for it, and it's a shame that they don't have it. So I'm very excited to see that.
We're looking into it, yes.
Beginning to blossom.
Yeah.
Of course, it's, it will affect all of the grades.
Yes, it will.
Up and, because they have to be, you know, they have to teach all that stuff, so that the ones that are ready and the ones that aren't ready have all been exposed to the right academics.
And to your point, ma'am, what it will do is, it will force, not force is in the word, it will allow us to take a very deep dive into the curriculum, to make sure that, that if I have, if you and I are the same teacher, and we're teaching eighth grade, for instance, right, that our curriculum and our assessments, even though we may have a different teaching style, we all need to be, they all need to be exposed to the same standards, right? And so this transparency is wonderful. I don't, I see it as only an opportunity for growth, and again, I really applaud the teachers, because the teachers have wanted this, right? I just think that these have been conversations that have needed to be had, and I'm excited to begin the work. There's going to be, there's going to be a lot of work, but it's, it's good work for our kids.
I think it's great. The one other area that I wanted to just mention is, I'm sure you have so many things on your plate, but I also have a lot of people frequently ask me about introducing various reading programs, but, you know, our first grade is reading learners, and I would love to see the time come when we can offer all the different programs and not just maybe one or two, you know, like Lyndon Mood Bell, and Gillingham, and Wilson, and all of those, because right now, people are sending their children privately and paying a lot of money to get summer programs for our kids that have trouble, and I'd love to see the school system be able to handle that easily. And I think you are just the person to do it.
You're very kind, and I will say that one of the things that Renee Sacco is doing is that, we know that there's always been this pendulum shift, right, when it comes to reading, right? And the state is really taking a hard look of what does it mean about the science of reading, right? And what does it mean with phonemic awareness, for instance, and phonics? And so, and then how do we embed writing also with reading? How does that look like, and what are the different types of writing that students need to be exposed to? And so that is something that Renee is taking a very hard look at, and I think one of the things that will be really important is that when we do a literacy night, especially for our elementary families, that this is one of the areas that she's going to be addressing. She's going to be saying, these are the programs we have, this is how it works, and I think that this is going to be so important, because I know that with COVID, what happened with the learning loss, if people don't believe that there was a learning loss, then they're not being honest with themselves. It is what it is. It's across this entire nation, okay? So I think this is going to be very helpful, and this is why we're really working hand in hand with the principals on finding the available nights, because I know that if I were a parent, I would want to know how best to support my particular child, and I would want to know what is exactly going on in the schools when it comes to reading, when it comes to science, when it comes to math. And now we have this wonderful SEL program, so how are we then holistically helping our children? And this is what we're planning, and this is coming down the pipeline. It is.
We are delighted that you are here and to lead us, and I'm, you know, not surprised to hear that with appropriate leadership, our teachers are ready to make these difficult decisions or easy decisions, but that will move us forward and help our students, so thank you. I also want to thank, I think Carrie Fortinato was here, maybe she thought she would hear more of this earlier, but she.
That was her sister.
Oh, it wasn't Carrie, sorry. Okay, so.
But she's a math specialist, too.
Okay, all right. So we're going to move on, Dr. Conti, to our MASC policies discussion.
Yes, from a very interesting conversation to policies, and that's why I say I'm an aspiring assistant superintendent, so.
Good luck with that.
Again, I will try. One day, one day I will, I will work on stuff. So the first agenda item are, again, Section G and Section H. G is the heavier of the two, and again, you received by notes, I believe you actually received the merged work that Dorothy Presser provided from MASC, and then there was one change that came in today that I want to suggest. So the, if you could look at G-B-E-B-D.
What?
Mr. Brooks, what would be the call sign of that? George, whatever.
Golf, Bravo, Echo, Bravo, Delta.
There you go.
All right.
G-B-E-B-D. Online fundraising and solicitations, crowdfunding. MASC, it's told us it's not required. There is a Burlington policy, but when I spoke to Nicole, she said there's another policy in J, which we're going to talk tonight, go to tonight. So she said we can replace that whole policy with, essentially, the policy should read, "The school committee prohibits the use of crowdfunding or third-party fundraising platforms or services by students or staff members." So she just wants, again, that whole section replaced by that, by that one sentence.
So.
Is that written somewhere?
It is written somewhere, and I will send it to you, and I will, I will, again, update this, I can read it one more time. "The school committee prohibits the use of crowdfunding or third-party fundraising platforms or services by students or staff members."
Okay. So do we want to start from the beginning, or would people like to just comment if they have questions on any sections?
I can read down the, Madam Chair, is what I was planning on doing, and then if people wanted to hear or make suggestion for changes, but that was where the only changes that I got, I believe, ahead of time. And my notes said to ask Nicole, and Nicole responded with that language. So again, GBA, equal employment opportunity, again, that was an MASC-only policy. GBEA, staff ethics conflict of interest, MASC only. GBEB, staff conduct, MASC only, it's not required, school committee choice, so you need to think about tonight whether you want that in or not.
Shall we say up and down as we go through it, so we know which ones we've accepted and haven't? I think that would be helpful.
That would be easier for me.
Okay, so GBA, is there any, so we're recommending, you're recommending MASC? Is everyone in agreement?
Yeah, there's no Burlington policy right now, so MASC is recommending that, MASC is recommending GBEA, again, no existing Burlington policy.
Okay, so we're agreeing to add that? Okay, GBEB?
GBEB, staff conduct. Dorothy, MASC, said it's really a school committee choice, it's an MASC policy, it's not required, though. So where you're saying keep it, again, either way is fine, so.
Everybody okay, keeping that? Okay, GBEBC?
Gifts to staff and solicitations by staff. Gifts to staff and solicitations by staff. It's, I'm recommending MAS C because there's new ethics rules that need to be updated, and they're updated in the MAS C policy.
Okay.
That one we just read, GBEBD, is, I recommend the following language, "The school committee prohibits the use of crowdfunding or third-party fundraising platforms or services by students or staff."
Okay.
And again, because it was school committee choice, not required, but that was recommended by Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole.
Can we just clarify that?
Sure.
Like, the one in here, I feel like had some caveats, like classroom X needs tissues and crayons is allowed.
I'm sorry, classroom?
I mean, it's just an example from the larger policy that I felt like was more clarifying of what is allowed versus like nothing is allowed. The solicitation can say classroom X needs tissues and crayons. I just worry we're losing a little the nuance if we just say crowd, like it's one-sentence policy versus this one.
We are losing some, but I guess we were trying to discourage the use of GoFundMe pages for this stuff. I think a teacher, again, can ask parents to contribute stuff, even though we'd like to cover all those materials. But again, I understand there. So again, I think Nicole's concern was, we really couldn't, if every teacher did a GoFundMe, we just couldn't keep track of it. So I think we, if there's a lack of resources or a request, I don't think that's what this policy was directed towards.
Okay.
I'd like to suggest that we approve the policy that Nicole suggested, and that we keep an eye on, yeah, I'm not making a motion, but that we keep an eye on this, because it is very broad in no online fundraising. And if we find ourselves in a situation where it seems appropriate to be using something online, then we can talk to Nicole and say, does this fit your category, is this not? And if we need to modify the policy in the future to add what is allowed, then we could do it. That way, you know, we could maybe notify the PTOs or something. If there's something they want to do that they're not sure, let's try to fit it and make it work.
Does this apply to the PTO? It said staff?
Oh, that's a good point.
No, okay.
Separate entity.
Okay, sorry, sorry, bad example.
That was important.
Yes, no, that's good. So, and actually, that alleviates my concern if-
Me too.
-PTOs can still do their fundraising however they choose to.
Yep, separate entity.
Just a clarifying question, if I may. You referenced something in policy J that would cover some of this as well, so we can focus on that for when we vote for J.
That's, with J, Mr. Brooks, not to give away the surprise because it's so exciting, Nicole was just saying we should add a sentence, it's about student fundraising, but just say students will not be required to participate in any fundraising activity. So she wanted to remove the obligation.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming you would all want that added. So that was the J piece.
All right. Next.
JBEC, drug-free workplace policy. Again, the policies match between MAS C and Burlington, but MAS C, JBEC, drug-free-
GBEC?
G, I'm sorry. Tired.
It's all right.
JBEC, drug-free workplace policy. The policies match, but MAS C has updated legal references, so I'm just going to go with the updated legal references.
And we have an agreement?
We don't need GBED, which is the tobacco use, because we already mentioned it in Section A. You already restrict tobacco use, and I'd like to simplify the-
Thank you.
...policy manual. Mandatory vaccination and testing policy, we can eliminate that policy.
Okay.
GBGB, staff personal security and safety, is an only an MAS C policy that was recommended. So again, I'm assuming we could add that in.
Okay, looks like we agree.
I thought we had, no?
No, not that. You have GBGE, which is domestic leave policy, and the content matches, so keep Burlington.
Everyone, question, Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, just one clarifying question on that. So is there protected reporting for this? Because I didn't notice that anywhere in this, you know, to be able to take the leave. Is it a protected reporting if a staff member, you know, wants to take this leave? So basically, you know, you limit the access to who's getting this, because it didn't specifically spell that out anywhere. And I think it's kind of an important nuance that we don't want to gloss over.
And I'm sorry, I'm not really following. Do we, who publicly knows about the leave request?
Yeah, so, you know, minimizing the people that touch it, right? So again, there's some policy that I have been party to other places where it's a protected reporting. So it's basically just you, that staff member, and maybe the principal kind of thing. If we could just add some language to make it a more protected reporting, so it limits the, you know, travel of who knows.
Yep.
If I could point you to page two of that Section GBGE, there's a statement that says "All information related to the employee's leave shall be kept confidential and shall not be disclosed, except to the extent that disclosure is," and then it gives five conditions. Does that meet the need of what you're trying to get to?
It does. I just felt like it was a little lack of, if everyone else is fine with it, I'm willing to accept it as is.
And again, if you want to flag it for the next round, we could do that. Okay. All right, so we're going to accept that one as is. Next one?
Next one is GBGE, domestic leave policy.
No, I think we just, that's the one we just finished.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you did.
Okay. Moving right along.
Moving right along, is right. All right. GBGF, family and medical leave. This is an MAS C policy only. Again, it's at the school committee discretion. I would just-
It's law.
I would just recommend adding it. It's kind of there.
Okay.
We do, actually. We do a very good job of that.
All right.
GBI, staff participation in political activities. This is an MAS C only. Dorothy recommended adding it.
Yep. Okay, we're good on that.
GBJ, personnel records. Again, MAS C only. And again, it was recommended we add GBJ.
Yep. All right.
GBK, staff complaints and grievances. Again, the policy lays out the chain of command and all that other stuff. It's an MAS C only policy, and that was recommended that we add, GBK.
Looks like we're okay with that.
Professional staff positions, GTA, MAS C only, and that was a school committee choice. And Ms. Simon, I believe you asked me a question about that. And our practice is to normally do this, but there's sort of some subtlety to it. So we may be requesting an additional social worker, for instance, using some S or money because of our increasing homeless population. Dr. Chen and I would take that additional position that's outside of the budget to the committee for your approval. If we need an additional section of math at the high school, because we have to make the schedule work, the position's in the budget, but we just have to change the compensation to that, I would probably just make that decision myself. So again, there's some subtlety to it. I don't think I need a .5, .05 math section that you would do that. Obviously, we stay within the budget that we have, and Nicole maintains that. And you see the impact of the budget through your monthly reports. And then you'll also see the addition of positions through the budget process as well. So when the school committee approves a budget for us to move forward with, you would be approving additional positions or position deletions, sort of through that process. So I felt I could work with GTA. And again, school committee choice, but I did, the language didn't bother me.
So we're keeping GTA?
Yep.
And next is GCBA, and you're recommending we don't keep that one?
Again, no. I'm recommending you don't.
Is there anyone who has a concern with that? Okay, so we are not going to keep GCBA. All right?
Yes. Again, employment of principals, it's, MAS C just has it updated. So we follow this anyway, so that's fine with me. GCBC, professional staff supplementary pay plans covered by the contract, so it's not needed. That's from MAS C, so we're going to-
We'll delete that one.
Delete that one.
GCBC.
GCBC. GCE, professional staff recruiting, posting of vacancies. Again, that's covered by the contract. I don't believe it's needed, GCE.
All right.
GCF, professional staff hiring. Was recommended that we keep Burlington, but expand the language to the protected classes, because the protected classes have expanded since the policy was written. So we would sort of, again, with that modification.
And also use this, the term licensure, which is more updated than certification now.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
GCG, substitute professional staff employment. We're recommending adding that. That's MAS C language. GCIA, philosophy of staff development. Again, that's MAS C only, and we're recommending that. It just really does just, talks about the district's commitment to professional development. GCIDA, out-of-state faculty travel. That's a practice that you all are familiar with, so we would keep Burlington's. GCIEA, the Northeastern University vouchers and scholarships. So that's Burlington only, and I just want to make sure that it is updated. Again, it's a very generous proffer that the Northeastern University extends to the community that the school district basically facilitates access to, which is great. GCJ, professional teacher status, MAS C only. And again, most of the content is covered in the CBA. But again, she recommended we do the policy. GCK, professional staff assignments and transfers. She recommended this as an MAS C only policy. There is also language in the contract, so I think they are in alignment. GCO, evaluation of professional staff. Again, the evaluation of professional staff is regulatory, so I don't really mind it being in the policy manual. GDQF, suspension and dismissal of professional staff members. That was recommended by MAS C. GCRD, tutoring for pay. Again, it's sort of, just discusses sort of the ethics of tutoring for pay. That's MAS C recommended.
I have a comment on that one.
Okay.
I mentioned this before. There's some, I don't have it right in front of me, because I haven't scrolled on that page. But it says something about your tutoring business. And it could, I would like it to be applicable if it's private tutoring, just a person, or if it's a business, to be clear that it's not allowed, whatever the, what it's saying, you know, you can't tutor your own students kind of thing for money. So if you could just adjust, I would like to adjust the language, just to be sure it doesn't include only if you have a quote "business," but also if you're receiving pay for tutoring. Are people comfortable with that?
The definition is tutoring means giving private instruction or help to an individual or group for which the teacher receives renumeration other than through the school committee. So I think that's sort of what-
GCRD.
So I can-
It just says private tutoring services.
GCRD.
What is it, RD? Oh, "A teacher cannot use school resources such as classrooms or materials in connection with a private tutoring business."
Yes. And so I just, in connection with private tutoring?
Sure, I'll take out business. Boom.
Thank you.
Yep, perfect.
All right.
This is a school committee choice. It's analogous to GTA. Policy modifies the commitment to establishing needed support staff position and reserves the committee's authority to establish them. Again, if they're budgetary, you typically would see them in the budget. We sometimes make adjustments. If we have to alter the contract, then that comes before the school committee anyway. So again, it's fine that you have it in there for me.
Do we need it?
No, you don't need it. But again, it's-
I'd like to take the sentiment here. Would people prefer to leave it in or not have it in?
Leave it in?
Okay, all right.
And then GBD, again, just like the other compensation plans that's in the contract, I would eliminate GBD.
You mean GDB?
GDB, sorry.
We're eliminating GDB. Okay, it's hard, it's hard. All right. Doing great.
Support staff vacations and holidays. Again, that's covered in the contract. We don't need it.
And the last one is GDO?
GDO, MAS C only, and that's recommended. So we'll keep GDO.
All right, is there-
It's first reading?
No.
This is our second reading. Are there any other comments or questions about Section G?
And again, I've responded to all the questions that I've received. So I have answered all the questions from you all. So my recommendation, Madam Chair, is that the school committee approve this on a second, Section G, and a second reading.
I will entertain a motion to the-
Salute.
To accept these, the new policy section as decided tonight. Moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0. I guess it is getting late.
Okay, Section H is, again, this is for a second reading. HA, the negotiation goals, is recommended because the MAS C is updated. So would recommend HA. HB, negotiations legal status. I think I sent you a suggestion. Dorothy suggested sort of a combination of the two. It's legal language. 150E is a regulatory, so we have to bargain what we have to bargain. And so the, both MAS C and the school district sort of just took a different approach. I just combined that language. So my suggestion would be to, I believe you all got my combination, just to go with the combination HB.
I think everyone's okay with that combination.
And then the HF, school committee negotiating agents, and they suggested Burlington, but we need to update our pronouns.
Just have one queep comment on that. In paragraph B, there's a typo, there's a one and information.
An HF?
Excuse me, 1B.
1B?
Ah, yes, thanks. Got that. Okay. I like those sections. So with the sort of merging of HB, I would recommend the school committee approve Section H for a second reading. H for a second reading.
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0. So I would like, the next section is Section J, and it would typically have been the first rea, it is the first reading, but Dr. Conti spoke with staff, and they would like to have a specific bullying policy in mind. It's a very long section. So I want to ask if people feel that they're ready to go through this tonight, or if people would prefer to just vote tonight as a second reading on the bullying policy. So that will be in effect, and we can post that. And then we can have the second reading of J at the next school committee reading, so we'll have more time to do that. I'm seeing a yes to wait. Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, just to clarify, were we voting on the 1 tonight to get in, and that was J? Juliet India, Charlie Fox, Bravo?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, we have an existing bullying policy. We're not without one.
Yep.
But the MASC policy aligns better with our procedures, and we're trying to get our handbooks aligned. So the staff would ask that you approve the MASC version of JICFB tonight as a second reading only in Section J.
Okay. Is there any question or comment or discussion on that? Okay. So I will entertain a motion to.
Salute.
For just this one policy? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? And the chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0.
And then, again, as this is a first reading, please review Section J. I think you have my notes. If you can't read my writing or anything, please send me an email if you have any comments. And after, we just had done JH, we have I, J, K, L. And J is the largest section of those remaining. So if we can get through J, we'll have three sections, three sections left. And then we'll get everyone sort of a digital copy of this that MASC will maintain moving forward. So it'll be accessible, and then we can, if there's any fine tuning, we can certainly approach the fine tuning later. You should have, again, Section J and my notes to Section J. If you're missing anything or need it resent, please let us know.
I want to thank you for preparing all the notes. And we're gonna, so we're only going to be voting a second reading on J at our next meeting. And after that, we'll have K, L, no. I, I, K, and L will be left. And so hopefully, we can do two of those as a first reading perhaps at our next meeting, or we could do it the time after, depending on what you find works for the next agenda. Okay?
Yes. Again, I'm trying to keep our agendas to 7:00 to 9:30 is roughly what I'm trying to do. And so it really would depend, but I think we're on schedule, and so with the policies. And I think we said calendar year, and that's really what I'm still working towards.
Okay.
Can I just ask the one question about JEB, the school attendance age?
Yes.
While we're all here? Because I have the merge changes, and there seems to be two. So we want to keep just this entrance age, this short policy?
Well, there's two versions of it. So the existing Burlington policy is August 31st.
Yep.
Turning 5, but it allows an eight-week window till October 30th, I believe.
31st.
31st, sorry. For.
Ghosts and goblins.
Ghosts and goblins, and parents to ask staff to assess their child.
Yep.
And the gray causes lots of issues sometimes. So there are many districts that just have a straight September 1st cutoff with no exceptions. MASC's version is the straight cutoff. And so I think the conversation of the school committee would be, do you have a hard cutoff date or the eight weeks? Do we modify the eight weeks to four weeks? So I think that would be the conversation with the district. It is something that we take seriously. It does generate lots of conversations, and we have deferred to the parents a lot. And so, and there may be, it's developmental. So again, we want to partner with the parents, but a hard date is easier for us to manage, but certainly would understand if the committee has a different policy that we would need to implement. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because it was a larger, they're both in black. So the top one is our previous, and then the second one is really just two bullet points.
Yes.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. Any other questions before we have a second reading at our next meeting on these policies right now? Okay. All right. So now we will move on to facilities and finance. And Dr. Conti or Mr. Kuna?
Just summer projects update. Bob, just, again, we always thank your crew, but thank them again. And so, and for the sake of time, what's going on?
Well, again, thank you to the crew. But for the sake of time, I will tell you the projects that are completed. So the middle school air conditioning project, complete. BECC bathroom remodel, complete. Memorial kiln room renovation, complete. Francis Wyman stair treads, complete. Francis Wyman grease trap, complete. Pine Glen paving project and tree removal, complete. And that's our complete project. What's ongoing right now is still the Pine Glen offices, the renovation to the egg room, also the BHS lower library offices. Both of those have been signed off by the building department, so thank you to the building department, electrical inspector. We expect both of those to wrap up end of this week or early next week. In two of the offices, members have already moved in. We're just waiting for doors to show up, and then we'll be able to close up the Pine Glen office. The Francis Wyman playground is also under construction right now. The rec department, thank you to them, they have removed the old equipment. Again, that was from the original Simons Park, brought over in 1996 during the Francis Wyman renovation. So we've got plenty of use out of that. Again, those have been removed. And then the new equipment is on site. So there's some site prep going on. There's some temporary fences. So I do want to let everyone know that the students are not out on the grass field right now. They can go to the baseball field, but they can't go to the upper and lower area, right outside the cafeteria. So they're using the black top out front or the baseball field out back for any recess. One more upcoming project is the Francis Wyman intercom. Thank you to Nicole that went out to bid, and she's finalizing some contracts right now with a vendor. So we hopefully will be starting a new intercom install at Francis Wyman in the upcoming weeks. So I think that's it for now.
Bob, the middle school scoreboard?
Oh.
Yes, so the middle school scoreboard, actually, is installed. I talked to Sean Hart. We actually, last week on Thursday, played our first game with it. Friday was used, Saturday was used. So what's not installed yet is the Bluetooth controller, but we are able to plug directly into it and then control the scoreboard. So hopefully, that Bluetooth controller, again, another part we're waiting on, will be in soon, but we're hearing about a two-week wait. And what the Bluetooth controller allows us to do is have app integration either from an iPad or a cell phone, so we don't have to use a wired controller. But.
Excellent. Well, thanks again to all the staff who have been making all that happen. Thank you. Ms. Monica?
Bobby, at the last meeting, we talked about funding for air conditioning at Pine Glen and that we would only be able to do half with the funding. Has a decision been made on whether to move forward with the half or go back to town meeting for the rest of the money?
May I take a stab at that? Nicole wrote to town council about what the warrant said because we wanted to know whether we could fund half the project if the warrant article was written that we could only do the whole project. And Nicole's online, so she can make sure I'm speaking truthfully. I believe town council said that we probably could use the money for Phase 1 and Phase 2 for half, but she recommended that we go back to town meeting to at least inform them that we're phasing in the project because they voted on the money believing we were doing the whole thing. So Nicole, is that correct?
Yes. They said that basically the vote just dictated that the funds needed to be used on HVAC for the school, but that it was more of, instead of like a legal issue, was more of like what was the intent of town meeting to make sure that there's no misunderstandings of, like, anything that would, I guess, breach trust with town meeting that we were pursuing a project that they had a different sort of intent for, but that we could do like a Phase 1 and then continue with seeking additional funding for a Phase 2 if that's what we wanted to do.
That's great. Could you? Take care of that September's town meeting?
I believe it's.
It's not a warrant article.
Um.
Discuss it, bring it up?
I'll ask whether we can bring it up. I'm going to say more than likely we would do January is what I think, but I'll certainly can ask. It might, because it's coming right up.
It'd be nice to have it.
Mm-hmm.
For the next time it's hot like last week.
Right. So again, just for the details, because we talk about it because we're immersed in it, town meeting approved half a million dollars, $500,000 warrant article for air conditioning at Pine Glen, similar to the projects we did at Francis Wyman. Bob, when was that? Was that this May or the prior May?
Last May.
Last May? And then.
May 22. Okay.
May 2022. When we got the design and went out to bid, the bid returned, the low bid was $890,000.
For the whole thing?
For the whole thing. So obviously, we couldn't, we don't have the funding to do the project. Why is that? The escalation was incredibly hard to predict, given the environment that we were in. We did get our estimate from professionals prior to the town meeting, and things just changed very rapidly over those.
Can we just make sure it gets done if, in January then?
Yes. I'll bring it before the committee. You all will approve the language that we write, so we can do that. Because I, the voice from above, so Nicole, did you hear that?
Yes.
Yes, see?
Hi, Nicole.
So we can do that from above.
I have a question, Martha.
Okay, Ms. Masardo?
Bob, what's the ETA on the playground?
I don't want to say this publicly. It was told two weeks from when the company is able to get here. So the company is finishing up other playgrounds now and was expected to be here this week. I'm hopeful that that's going to happen, or on Tuesday already. So a couple of weeks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the project updates? Thank you, Mr. Kuna. There's a lot going on. All right. So we have addressed the Fox Hill School Building Committee thought exchange issue. I would like to make a request, and maybe it's too late, but is it possible for Dr. Conti or someone to make just an announcement at town meeting about the, go ahead. Oh, you know, we will have had, we can't announce the school community meeting because the town meeting doesn't meet till the 27th, but maybe, and some kind of update on the school building project, because I know people are very interested. Is that something that will, go ahead, who would like to answer, respond?
I believe the OPM and designer are putting together a video for town meeting, and I offered to narrate it, or anyone else is welcome to narrate it.
Perfect. You're ahead of me.
That's kind of what we're going to do. My understanding is there's also, they are going to set up a table out in the lobby and answer any questions that town meeting members have.
And are we also going to have the thought exchange available for people to?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, good.
Dr. Conti's going to get us some iPads, I think.
Yes. We'll have some iPads there.
All right. Are there any other updates on the elementary school building project that we didn't cover tonight?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. The Burlington High School School Building Committee update?
This should be a very simple update, is our first Burlington High School Building Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday at 7 o'clock, 7:00 PM. It's going to be a hybrid meeting, but we will have an in-person, anyone who's welcome, there'll be an in-person location located here in this room. We have, I think, a relatively simple agenda, Marion, that you already posted and put out, which was introductions and then approval of the OPM RFP. And what was the third item?
I think we were electing some additional people.
Oh, and yeah, we were electing, we were electing some additional people and making a change. I think the vice chair of Ways and Means, I had omitted, and so we may make a switch for that. And there may be, I think there was another parent who was interested, and so we're trying to accommodate as many people as we'd like to.
Mr. Brooks?
Just a quick question. So we're voting on RFP. Is there a draft we can look at?
We will have a draft, I'm hoping to you, Wednesday night.
Great.
Yes. Yes, we will.
All right. Okay. Any other notice, comments on that? Okay. Next item, Pine Glen update.
Again, I will explore looking at the warrant article for January. Other than that, it's a standing agenda item. I don't really have anything else to add other than, Bob, we have to finish, we're going to finish up those offices in a week or so. So I think that's, I think that's the Pine Glen update now.
Can I ask why January? Usually, we put these kinds of things in May.
We do if we're going to ask for additional funding. I think we were just going to inform town meeting or ask town meeting.
Oh, is the update.
We want to get the language for.
Oh, for the air conditioning.
Yeah, just to say that we're going to phase it in. And if that's, if, just, I think as Nicole said, just to make sure that we're being fully transparent with town meeting. And if they thought they were supporting a full project, and we can't afford a full project, then we should explain why that is.
Good. Thank you. All right. Is there any other business that, to come before the board tonight? So I believe that we have need for an executive session. Is that correct, Dr. Conti?
Brief one, yes.
Okay. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district and the chair so declares, and I do. And also for the approval of executive session minutes. So if we return, we will return to this meeting only to adjourn. I don't have my language in front of me. Is there something else I'm supposed to say?
During the public session for purposes of adjournment only.
Of adjournment only. Okay. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
Salute. Second.
Take your pick there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait, for executive session, I have to take a roll call. Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
The chair votes aye.